I will go ahead and call this work session to a halt. First up is FMP 2.0.
Yeah, and I'll take that one. Good evening again, everybody. So, we'd taken these in conjunction too at a last work session, or not necessarily in conjunction, but we had both these topics on there. There were some questions directors had that we had responded to via email in regards to some fine arts and other questions. That's kind of what we had agreed to loosely at the work session to get those answered and addressed. And so, at this point, I think it's kind of a clarifier for us if the board is okay in concept with what's in suggested revisions to the FMP. We're not asking for a vote at this time because we would still be working on costs around things like the field houses and the natatorium partnership with the city of Corville. But if we're okay in concept, then we'll keep kind of moving down that path. And when we have some of those costs ready, then we would actually bring it for a formalized vote. But there were some changes in the facility master plan and some things we suggested to you. So, if there's either more questions or information you need before you say you'd be comfortable with that, I think this would be an opportunity to provide that input and then we would keep bringing those back to you or sharing that with you.
Where are we at with the strategic plan for the CFI with our committee?
Well, that's kind of a teach and learning topic. So, I mean, as far as the FMP part of it goes, Director Finch, I would say, you know, we have the line item budget for what we've got in for the facility project. You guys had approved the most recent part with the top floor and with those basement construction things. If we wanted to get into what that student experience piece is going to look like, we could definitely follow up with the presentation on that.
I bring that up because form follows function. So, I was just curious where, if we're at a point where we can present to the board and maybe get something on the website about that?
Yeah, I mean, I, when I asked you guys, or when we asked for your approval of that last construction piece, I highlighted a couple of things that we'd explored with that JA partnership. We have our CFI team is starting to meet again next week. So, I think we'd be ready for a presentation either September, early October. We could turn that around. So, I do think that's timely and something we need to do with you guys to know what that student experience is going to look like for sure.
Knowing that we will come back with more details and budgets and it's not a vote.
Right.
I'm fine with moving forward. I would just suggest when we get some more of those firmer details, it would be nice to have that conversation at the board table.
Yep.
President Malone, the only thing I want to add for the people listening at home that are, that bring this up on YouTube, this, the FMP 2.2 plan is at our July 23rd board work session meeting. So, if you have any interest at home, go to Board Docs and you'll find it there.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Director Lingel for bringing up your question about expenditures for athletic facilities and for fine arts facilities. And I noted in the letter from Dwayne that he cited over $104 million in fine arts expenditures, including work that was done at the FMP 2.1.
Yeah, that was the total expenditure for all of those projects. It was impossible. I tried to break it out and just, you can't do that.
And I didn't, I didn't expect to know we did $104 million.
No, 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 no. That was not the overall scope of those credits.
But to me, that was an indication that past boards have decided that the district needs to invest both in athletic facilities and in fine arts facilities in perhaps an equal measure in vague uniformed facilities.
When I left here the last meeting after that discussion, I thought, we don't really need to itemize what we've done because we've done so many things at so many buildings for fine arts that people just don't realize. So, that motivated writing that note.
I really appreciate having that information.
Thank you for me as well. I meant to email you, but I forgot as well.
It took a couple of hours.
So, I don't hear any real objection to moving forward. I just want to make that clear. Okay. So, that takes us to the big conversation tonight, the elementary configuration.
All right.
And the city of Corville boundary recognition. So, it looks like, oh, no, Director Proctor, no.
I'll just say something. Open it. It's all right.
I'm just a slide guy right now, so we're good.
Yeah.
Hey, can I say something?
I don't know. I don't know, Dwayne.
You never know what I'm going to say.
I know. We didn't talk about it beforehand.
But you know, this guy was up there at the board floor thanking everybody for everything they did and everybody in the district worked their tails off. But nobody worked harder than that guy right there. He was out there day and night, night and day, calling me on my cellphone between Iowa City, wherever I was. But nobody, nobody worked harder than Matt Degenor did. I just wanted to say that.
Well, thanks.
You don't get a chance to thank yourself.
Maybe I will let you talk.
I'm done.
Chase was right with me every day too, so thank you to him. But tonight, we're excited to talk to you about elementary configuration and get involved on this conversation. I know the team's going to cover it here with some of these things about the reasons it's important, but it'd make me feel better to say it out loud just so people keep hearing it from us. This isn't just about cost saving, right? This is about trying to elevate and improve our student experience. We heard a community commenter tonight talk about frustrations of class size of 30 or more, and that's why we're looking at some of these solutions. Because the scenario we're in is going to keep producing the results we have currently. And you guys have been on the board, all of you, long enough to know that every time we hit the fall, we get class size concerns, right? And it's not that we're not spending money on people or that we're not spending the resources we have close to the students. It's the limitations that we have and the constraints we have. And so, this is a timely conversation. You're probably going to hear some timely section numbers at elementary buildings and how that could be addressed through some of these solutions, which I think is helpful context for us to have at this time of year. We do kind of have this boundary thing nested under the agenda item because I think it's tricky to talk about where boundaries fit into this. And there may be some conversations that lead us to some boundary decisions or potential work that you want to look at. But those things are, they're tied together, but they're separate. It's almost, it's just hard to not talk about the interconnected nature of those. But I would just keep cautioning the board from picking off isolated pieces of boundary work to take on. I think that's troublesome when we just want to address one boundary here or one small issue here. I think we would want to present to you, well, here's maybe a host of boundary challenges you'd want to consider if you want to talk about boundaries or to ask you to look at it more comprehensively than solving an isolated issue. Because when you solve somebody's one isolated issue, you're going to get presented with another one right away that is going to be compelling as well. So, with that, I'm going to let the team kind of guide our conversation and presentation to you here tonight. And then, we're excited to hear your feedback and next steps you think we should be considering in that work.
Thank you. Okay, so tonight, we're going to go through kind of our second step. If you remember, two weeks ago, we brought to you the first presentation about potentially re-envisioning our elementary schools and really wanted to get this idea of the eight, yeah, the 18-section buildings. And so, if you remember back, we talked about different ways that we could get to those 18-section buildings in order for us to be able to maximize the student experience in each of our attendance centers. And so, tonight, what we want to do is continue to talk a little bit about those 18 sections and where we could possibly do that, where we have limitations and where we would potentially need to focus our efforts. We're going to talk a little bit about capacity and enrollment, where we currently are. Superintendent Degenor did reference the community commenter earlier this evening. And as she mentioned, I've been in frequent communication with her and a lot of other families that are sitting in that very similar situation. And so, we want to make sure that we are highlighting different ways that while we're trying to make elementary school in Iowa City engaging and exciting and rethinking some of these ideas, we also want to be solving that issue so that we can be closing the gap between sections that are sitting at 17 and 33. I don't think any of us are going to say that's optimizing our resources and providing an equitable experience for our kids. We'll talk about feeder patterns. And then, what we really want to dig into is our proposed three-year timeline and what those next steps could look like for us. So, there's 18 sections by the numbers here. Those advantages are the same ones that we had brought to you two weeks ago. But when we took the numbers of where we currently are, if we took our 288 sections with 18 sections per building, it would show us just with the numbers that we would need about 16 elementary schools to be able to achieve, to achieve the number of sections that we have. With our 6,335 students in 16 schools, we would have buildings of about 400 per school. And 400 students per school with 18 sections per building would average about 22 students per class. We are well aware that the average also considers the highs and the lows. But we wanted to bring that to you because with that, we are really trying to shrink that gap so that we don't have some of those extremes on either side. This is a slide that should look familiar to you because we brought this to you last time. However, the data is updated. Kristin went in and updated the data as of yesterday. Our enrollment rolls over every day at 7:00 a.m. And so, this would have been the data that we had yesterday at 7:00 a.m. with our PK5 enrollment and our K5 enrollment. So, you'll see that those, there are those two columns to show where our PK5 enrollment and our K5 is. We have the column that talks about our number of K5 sections at each of the buildings. So, you can see that we have a couple buildings already, actually, a few buildings already at that 18 with everything down to, where should I get them?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half. You'll also see where our average class size is. Again, you can see, you'll notice, well, you won't notice in this one, but we do know that there are some that are sitting at 33, but then also those that are sitting at 15 or 16. This next slide is the exact same information, just organized by capacity. And so, it is in order based off of total capacity in our largest school down to our smallest school. So, you'll see that our enrollment at Penn is, our K5 enrollment at, or we can go PK5 enrollment at Penn is at 512 and our smallest enrollment is Schimmick at 191. So, this is just putting that exact same information into organized chart by size.
Just one note, it's not in order of capacity, it's enrollment.
Enrollment this.
And it's PK through 5 enrollment.
So, this next part, what we really wanted to highlight for you this evening is, these are our three enrollment, sorry, our three feeder patterns. And so, if you look at City High with an enrollment of 17, approximately 1,700 students, you'll see that Southeast has approximately 1,300. And then, those are the nine elementary schools that feed into Southeast and City High. The middle column has our Liberty enrollment at about 1,300 and those five schools that feed into it. And then, that last column has West High with 15,5 roughly and the six schools that feed into that. So, while enrollment differs from high school to high school, if we look at City High and West High that are about 150 students off, there's three elementary schools difference. And so, we are pretty heavy on the east side with the number of attendance centers. That is also where we see our smallest buildings. So, if we go where, you don't need to do it, Nick, but if you were to go back to that previous slide, our smallest elementaries are Schimmick, Mann, Twain, and Lincoln, and those are all sitting on that City High side. So, what you're going to see in the rest of this, the rest of this presentation are a lot of solutions that do sort of focus on that east side of town. And we really wanted to be pretty transparent about why we are focusing on solutions that are there right now so that we can think about how we optimize our classroom, our buildings and our classroom sizes in that part of town.
And one thing I would add to this one in particular is also, not only are some of our schools on the east side are smaller ones, they do have the smallest capacity as well. So, some of our potential solutions that we're looking at of, okay, if we'd like to have an 18-section building, then that's going to have around 400 students. In some cases, that's not viable in that attendance center. So, that's something that we had, that we're taking into consideration as we think about various potential options and solutions that we could, we could look at.
So, this is our proposed three-year timeline. Again, we just wanted to bring some ideas to you of what we think these next three years could look like for us as we re-envision this. We want to make sure that we have taken a comprehensive look at what our options are, that we've gotten some feedback from community members, from our staff, to make sure that we're having informed decisions. So, our proposed timeline for this year is for us to determine which east side school would be the best to pair with the idea of it being paired next school year in '25, '26. We'd want to determine which east side elementary would best serve as an early childhood center. And we talked about the advantages of that last meeting is really being able to expand our offering down for our three-year-olds and providing more wraparound care that are outside the regular school day hours. We want to do an in-depth exploration of academy schools. That's something that we would still want to consider. We're excited about that. But we want to make sure that we take the time to figure out what our community is wanting in terms of academy schools and where those could potentially be to draw excitement from our families. And then, of course, all of that is with community input. Once doing that, it would lead us to the '25, '26 year where we would have those buildings on the east side paired. That would, our goal is that that would open that next year. We would take the time to repurpose, renovate an east side elementary to serve as an early childhood center. We know that there are a lot of quotes and expectations and changes that would need to happen to any building in order to be prepared for a preschool center. Bathrooms are one of those big pieces. And so, we couldn't make those renovations while an elementary student is currently inhabited in that. And so, we would need that year to be able to make those renovations, determine the location or potential reduction and repurposing other elementary sites, and then select and prepare for the academy schools. And then, that third year, '26, '27, we would be hoping to open two elementary schools as academy schools. Our thought is that we would begin with kindergarten through second grade and then we would add a grade level each year as those students matriculate up. The first thought that just came to mind, we're not coming into this yet, but was, if it was a language immersion school, it'd be, it'd be hard to start a fifth grader in a language immersion school and have all of their math instruction in Spanish. So, we thought K2 would maybe be that sweet spot where we would start that and then grow that enrollment over time. And then, we'd be ready to open that east side early childhood center. So, that would be the proposed three-year timeline that talks about those three ideas of the preschools, the academies, and the pairing. Yeah. And so, what we have thought that our next steps would be in order to achieve the goals on that timeline is their first is to form a committee to explore these future elementary options. While I have, I think Matt has trust in our team to do that, we know that we are not the only ones that that impacts. And we want to get feedback from our community, from our staff, from our students to see what would be the best for our community and what meets our needs. And so, we would want to form a larger community and then from that, form three subgroups that would focus on those three areas. Director Lingel, I know you had some questions about like VASPs and different programs that we provide in our elementaries, and those would be questions that these committees would really start to focus on. So, if they were doing the paired, for example, what would that VASP look like? What would the PTAs look like? And so, that's where we'd really dig into those three different ideas and explore those in greater detail. We would want to develop detailed timelines for each of those subgroups so that we would have that larger overall elementary plan, but then timelines for each of those three, I think we call them ideas in here, but kind of those three topics that we're actually looking for. We would gather feedback from our community at each of those subgroups. We have that on there twice, you can see how important that is to us. We would research and visit established academy schools and early childhood centers. We would want to see where are school districts that are doing these things well? What are some of the hurdles that they encountered? And how would we want to work around those to make sure that when we are opening them, they are the best that they possibly could be? And then, we, of course, would provide regular reports to the board and the community with our status updates in each of those three subcommittees. So, that is kind of what we are thinking at this, at this time. And so, we'd be open to any questions, comments, or discussion that you have around kind of that three-year timeline, around our next steps, any feedback you want from them.
I just have questions around the next steps since we just got off of that. When you talk about forming committees and ensuring that we have people from the community, and I know the idea is to start with the east side, but since this is perhaps something that we will see across the district, can you talk about the makeup of those committees? It wouldn't be limited to east side families or east side staff?
Right. No, I mean, that wasn't a part of our discussion. I think we would need to figure out, first of all, like, what's our desired number of people that we want on these subcommittees? Because we know when we expand really large, it makes it really hard to do the work. And so, we would, I think most importantly, we want the parent representation, student voice, which for elementary kids oftentimes comes through their teachers or their guardians. And so, we would be, and board members too, so we'd be looking through, we haven't nailed down the number of what we'd be looking, but no, I don't, there wasn't plans to just narrowly focus it to east side, but we would, of course, want that east side representation. I know that we have several principals, speaking even of the one that's in the audience, that have reached out several times of like, this sounds really exciting, I want to be involved in this. And so, they've, so like, I've seen this, what or where are we at next? And so, we just want to make sure that we're gathering all of their feedback and input.
Yeah, I was at the welcome staff and I don't know how many principals I've talked to, but everyone was like, when are you all going to 18-sections? I want to be part of that conversation. It sounds like at least administrators are excited about that possibility.
This is really an intriguing strategy. And I really commend all of you for being so bold and being so different. I do want to ask, this, this presentation talks about exploring future elementary options. And then, I don't see a mention of the 18-section concept here in the, one of the bullet points. Is that, am I overlooking that or?
So, our thought is, our thought is that's the whole umbrella, that if we do these things, that's what it would achieve. So, if we opened these preschool centers that are in some of our existing buildings, we would need to redraw boundary lines that would allow for those 18-section buildings. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And it obviously brings up a question about re-drawing boundary line, which is one of the favorite things we've seen in the past.
And I think that's part of what we'd want to hear from you guys too, because I've answered, I'll be honest, I may have answered this question differently just with some of you in informal conversations too, right? Is, okay, is really the goal to get to 18 sections everywhere? Is it more of like an aspirational goal and we try to work around the edges where we can to try to get buildings more aligned to those 18 sections? I mean, it's kind of, it also is, I mean, we've suggested the timeline, but it's your comfort level too about how aggressive you want to be, also knowing, like Charlie was just saying, the more you step in, draw boundary lines, talk about changing people's attendance center, right? The more resistance we're going to have, just the more explanation, the more input, the more sessions. It's not impossible, it's just going to take different steps in the process, right? To get to some of those things. So, you know, some of this is, okay, how much do you want to, how far do you want to go versus how much do you want to just try to work to get as close in some areas as we can?
It seems like this proposal too is moving at a really good pace because to one school parent, you know, we'll do one early childhood center. I mean, I think this is good steps in that direction. I mean, and maybe, I'll just move back to us, some boundaries to do the early childhood centers because that will close something.
Right.
But, you know, I mean, but it's taking nice steps towards, towards it, knowing that we're not going to get to 18-section schools in two years if that were to happen.
This is what we felt like we could reasonably handle, right? I mean, yeah.
Yeah, that's. And we'd also learn from these things, right? So, say that paired schools went extremely well and we found another pairing in our, you know, another pairing that potentially worked as well. So, that's kind of what our.
And I'd also be interested with the study group, you know, maybe for an academy, 400 is too many. You know, I mean, maybe we'll, we'll see like, hey, trying to do 400 in a Spanish-language immersion academy, the perfect size is 290. And it's like, oh, well, look, Schimmick has capacity for, so we may, I would think, maybe discover things like that along the study groups for the academies. And that'll help narrow the focus on what to do with some of these schools that can't get to 400. Because they just, and I'd also be interested if there's things that we could add on to those buildings to increase their capacity.
Always.
Always. Well, we're going to take that to the bank. What he says.
Eliza, before we get too far into this, we, on that '25, '26 school year, I remember the first time you guys shared this with me, I asked for a clarifier too, but just to make sure the board's clear on, you know, how the second point's different from the third one and really what we're talking about in the third point of '25, '26 there.
And I don't know, capacity increase, that would be the route to go down. When you start looking at the census data over the next four years, the, or by the time my baby ages into school, right now, if you look at the census data, there will be roughly 34,500 fewer K-12 children in the state right now. And that's 15 and a half percent from Johnson County. I can share this data with you, I put it together myself. Johnson County should expect around an 8% child drop. And we're one of the growing ones. So, over the next five years.
I think maybe, I think the point of the study is to just like, what are the options and what can we do? Like, that's why we did the study.
But it's a good, a good point because, right, we wouldn't do this study in a vacuum. We would continue to do the other things that we do, our demographers report that comes out every other year. So, as this study moved forward and we looked at that, we would have that data that we can pull to show where those trends are and how that movement's going.
And where I'm going with this is kind of, you know, this 18-section model makes the most sense to me as someone that studies statistics. And one of the things that happens when you have these smaller schools, well, first of all, when we, when we draw boundaries, we can make it perfect, perfect, perfect. But within six years, everything is completely imbalanced. Can be completely imbalanced, again, especially when we have really small buildings. So, one of the things that I, you know, some of my stats mind works, it's like, okay, easiest way to describe this is rolling it out, right? You roll a die, get, anybody that has family that, go grab, make sure everybody grabs a dice. You roll it, each one of those six sides represents a grade level. You roll it 10 times, you will not get an even distribution across those numbers. You roll it 50 times, you start to even it out. And if you roll it 400 times, you will start to get into equalization across grade levels, right? Because that's just probability. You know, there's other factors in here and it's just coming out of the idea that everything's random. But it's, when I'm looking at this, and I, I can honestly say, I am one of the people that missed the split this year. Yeah, 24 classes, 24 in kindergarten. I look over to my daughter's best friend in a school where they got the splits. And if those kindergartens were in one building together, everybody would have ended up in a classroom of 20. Instead, you have kids in the classrooms of 24 and kids in classrooms of 16 and 17. And it's like, I, I have a hard time not thinking that this is the path to go down. The one question that I have is, and some of them have been addressed already, I did put this one in, is how busing and attendance support busing, especially when bringing these buildings together. And we're on the east side, so it's a distinctly different traffic pattern going downtown to downtown Iowa City throughout the day. And especially in those morning hours, you have college students, professors, staff driving through neighborhoods. And how that is going to factor. Because that, what I've put, pitched to the people already on the east side, that's their first question. How are logistics going to work?
Which I think that's a lot of, a lot of the pieces that we want to address in these subgroups, is like thinking through these, what are all the logistical pieces?
And there's going to be a lot of intersections between different things. Like, as we look at, you know, some of the boundary discussions, if you're looking at a particular neighborhood and like the attendance support busing, then would it be more logical that they're a part of this building then because now that's going to support some of the other goals we're trying to accomplish? Or if we're looking at some redistribution of kids? I mean, there's a variety of things that will all kind of come together in those. And that's why earlier, Charlie, when you, your question, I think a lot of these things will happen naturally as you work through some of them, we start having some of those dialogues. And then, we start looking at, okay, well, here's this specific situation. And, well, why do these students go here versus here, whatever it might be? Or are there some things we can look at from a transportation perspective that, you know, maybe? Or are there some things we can look at from a transportation perspective that, you know, may be better? I mean, there may be some opportunities for improvement and that would be our hope as we look through some of these things. It's not only, you know, we've talked about the advantages just in general, but what are some of the other ways we can become more efficient and more effective or better for kids?
Better for kids, that's an interesting thing to say and represent to the community. Are we pretty confident that we can do this, maintain SES balance and racial balance in the schools? Or some kind of racial balance present though?
We'll do which thing, Charlie? Because I mean, each of the options is going to probably have a different answer to that question, right? Like, if you're going to pair schools, we've already put out there any, you know, hypothetical example, Lincoln and Man. Well, I mean, basically your ratio, whatever your racial makeup there is going to be the, you know, the makeup of those two school communities together, right? If you do an academy school, well, it's a little bit of a wild card, right? Because you're now going to be accepting new students into that school from outside of the boundary. You can set some goals of what you would like to see with that. But there you are probably trying to engineer some goals, right? And so you're going to put in some guardrails around that.
How about the eighteen section? Can we do that and still have?
I think your priority is shifting at that point, right? I mean, like a lot of times, at least my history with boundary conversations here has been a lot, that has been a large part of the conversation, right? Is it's trying to engineer some demographic balance where possible, right? I think your priority point here would start to change more towards an eighteen section campus. And so your ability to achieve both those goals, I think it's really difficult. And so, I mean, if your goal is really the eighteen section campus, achieving that goal is going to be more difficult to do.
So we might get into the situation where we're being accused of segregating?
One thing that I would share is just from a mathematical perspective, as your schools get larger, you generally have more opportunities to balance demographics within your buildings. So our biggest struggle in the past has been our smallest elementary schools, which have small catchment areas. And there are few opportunities without doing weird things on the map to make those more representative of our broader community. As schools grow, as we look at this eighteen section concept, again, without getting into any specific details, but as the schools grow, it should be easier to achieve some of those goals that you're discussing.
Our elementary schools, they are not equal in terms of SES at all. And that's why that was the advent of RAM, right? So, you know, the more efficient that we get, the more likely it will be that we can RAM these schools that need to be, that we will have the extra, I mean, I guess I'm speaking out of turn here, but I would.
I think it's a good point. I mean, that's what you would do, right? Is that you would decide to follow the resources to the school rather than moving the students around. I think Adam's point is compelling, right, around the size, you know, makes some sense. And then what you're saying, Director Finch, I mean, I think is an excellent point too. It's kind of like what we see in our secondary scenario now, right? How liberty, no matter really what you do in that scenario, is going to probably have a different makeup than what you're going to see on the east side with City High, so.
Thinking about efficiency, it brings me back to, or docket of options during the closure of Hills. Like, that's, any RAM is somewhere on, if you don't figure out how to get more efficient as a district, especially these K-12, or not K-12, that's a different thing, K-5 buildings, that's going to probably come up again at some point.
And I'm just going to follow up, Director Finch, on your comment. Like, if we were to implement some of the, even one of these kind of proposed ideas, we probably could have taken care of any of our larger class sizes that we're currently experiencing. The ones that we heard about tonight, you know, those thirty, those thirty-one's that are hanging out there. We can bring that down, you know, because just redistributing the FTE into our system, you know, as you're describing. Now, all of a sudden, we start to narrow, because that's one of the other goals of all of this too. It's just to narrow that gap between, we have fourteen to thirty-two right now. I mean, that's, so how can we squish that? And how can we have that so that the experience is more similar across our buildings as well?
When, on that twenty-five, twenty-six, it says pair two selected elementary schools, that would be, just make sure people know what's going on, that'd be two hundred students in one elementary school and two hundred students in another ideally. But then.
Roughly.
Probably depends with, probably depends with schools.
I'm going with their four hundred.
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to make sure we're all working from the same baseline here. So we're not necess, the proposal tonight is not suggesting we go redraw the boundaries to achieve eighteen section schools. And so that is not what we're doing, right? We're saying that in an aspirational sense, right, we could be the most efficient with four hundred student schools, right? We're not just going to achieve that overnight. I don't think, I don't think it'd probably be wise to go redraw the boundaries and just try to achieve that. And so what we're suggesting is here's some ways we could start to chip away at that, right? Here's three solutions where you could start to address getting some schools that are away from that four hundred number, closer to that four hundred number to achieve a better student experience and also some operational efficiency to achieve that better student experience. So just from, because I know we started with that eighteen section, four hundred student, and we've talked some about boundaries. Just to be clear, our team's recommendation is really to follow this timeline to work on trying to get some schools closer to that four hundred. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see with our current facilities that we would ever get to that. But I mean, it's just a goal. It's just a way for us to think about how can we be more efficient.
It's kind of like, what's our North Star as we think about these things, right?
And then here are some things we can do to get that.
Well, and also allows us to offer some programming we haven't yet offered in the district. Offering an opportunity for those academy schools, looking at a preschool center. Because as successful as our preschool campaigns have been in the home buildings, we know that people want a variety of experience options. And so if there are multiple, a multitude of things that become benefits from moving this work forward.
To add to that, we even discuss, as we get to our paired schools, there may be unique opportunities in that. When you're looking at a building that is K-two and a building that is three-five, what could that look like? How could that look a little differently as well? Or how could that then even couple into some of the other discussions around academies or wherever it might be? You could do some really unique things. Just not all at once.
He's contemplating early childhood centers. When we were talking about pre-K, having, providing pre-K standards of experiences in the district, we're talking about having that individual building.
Yeah.
So, so that would, this is a different way of the early childhood, right?
Yeah, I thought this would be in addition to, we don't at this time have a desire to move away from that as we just, as you're aware, moved to that this year. But one thing that we did, our preschools start on Friday, so we're excited about that. And so we'll see that change. But we were able to add five full day, but our full day is school bell, is school bell. And so it's very similar to, it is the same as the elementary day, except for a couple of those areas where they have the shared visions and then the few that have the half day with some wrap care. However, we had a huge, we have a waitlist, as you can imagine, for that full day program, that tuition rate. And so we do know that there is a desire out there in the community. I think Director Ling is over here like, yep, been singing this for the last several years. And so we don't want to get away from that. What we would want to do is have this early childhood center that would also provide access to three-year-olds, which right now, we don't, we do have some three-year-olds, but it's not as robust as what we know our community needs and is wanting. However, three-year-olds are only afforded the option right now at the half day. Because we need to be providing any kind of full day and as many opportunities as we can to those four-year-olds. And so this early childhood center would be three and four-year-olds, it has extended hours. So it would, we would need to look, again, that group would look at what would those hours be? And just off the top of my head, we think about some of our local, private early childhood centers here that's like six forty-five to six forty-five, you know, or seven to five-thirty that allows for a little bit more flexibility for our community.
So kids are there that long?
Yes.
So it's like a full day date.
Like, I think about my own family, when my kids went to Beinhart, which was an early childhood, I dropped them off before I went to work, seven o'clock, they picked them up at five.
And they opened at six thirty.
I think they opened at six thirty.
And they stay open until six P.M.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, they sure do. So sometimes the kiddos need to stay there for twelve hours. And that's, and they're fine.
And just responding to the needs of our community and that. And so we would still have preschool in our buildings. Maybe some buildings would just have that half day, that's that family, that met the needs of that family, but we would have this early childhood center.
And you might wonder who that's appealing for. I mean, it's appealing to have it in the building if you have older children that are also in that building. But if you don't have older children in school, a center might be more appealing because it's closer to where you work or it's on your commute. And so I think it just provides us another avenue to give those options to parents that might have their needs and challenges.
And we could still tap into cities and the counties of tax revenues to provide subsidies to parents who can afford it full cost.
That would be our, that would always be a goal. Yep. And so we, again, with that committee, that would be working on that, would work through our early access dollars that we have and continue to think through how we'd be able to provide that and childcare assistance.
Additional comments, questions?
So are we comfortable with this timeline? I mean, is this, yeah, I think that's, that's a big key in our work, you know, just how it informs our next steps. I would suggest that, you know, we've had this conversation twice in a work session. My recommendation would be we put this on a board agenda at the next meeting. Walk through, maybe a combo of these two presentations or link both presentations so that we bring some community awareness to it. But if you guys are comfortable with the timeline and the concept, we could even actionalize some things about starting to sketch out what a committee would look like, you know, a more refined timeline. But I know for us, if we're going to commit to doing the way these things are staged in this three-year timeline, we need to move, you know, in September, you're going to get moving on it.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, is a more detailed timeline. I think about Hills, and we started having that discussion in February and made the decision in March. And so if we're talking about repurposing an elementary school on the east side for early child, like I think, you know, by March would be when I think we wanted, that's the decision date, which means we really have to get that committee started and all that. Well, I, no, and I know it's tight and it doesn't have to be right March, but how do you have? Well, to build it, but my point is if we're going to tell the parents that go to X elementary school that this school is closing and their kids are going to go somewhere else, we can't tell them that in July. We got to tell them that.
We'll work through some of the timeline issues, because we have some, you know, we'll want to talk to Jeff and Dwayne about, you know, what's even a turnaround in construction based on recent experience? What's appropriate time to inform parents? We can work on refined timeline. I do think I'm hearing, you know, generalized consent about, hey, we're comfortable with this approach, right? In the general idea. And so if we keep bringing back details, it sounds like you guys.
It's ambitious, but you hear the concerns of parents with thirty-three, one, three, two. We have to do something about this class size. You can't wait, yeah.
Well, twenty-two is an amazing. For any.
Twenty-two, same for Tita Degner, as you mentioned. I mean, probably the next step, since we've had this conversation quite at a work session, would the team be ready to have like a combination of the last two presentations or one of the presentations at the next board meeting?
Yeah, I think we'd like to. So, yeah.
Directors are okay with that?
Mitch, you got one more?
I have one final question, and you don't have to answer it tonight, because I'm sure it's one that will come up. Will they, will you be touching high school and middle school lines?
Yeah, I think the goal would be not to. I think, you know, Nick and Eliza talked about a couple instances where when you dig into a situation, then that may open up a conversation about that. But I think the goal is to try to stay away from messing with our feeder patterns right now unless you guys decide that's something else we want to look at or there's an impact point where we think we want to open that conversation up. But otherwise, no.
Additional questions, comments? Hearing none. Now we entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second. All those in favor?